All good? Are we live streaming?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the May 19th regular council meeting to order at 5:00 PM. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the traditional territories of the Blackfoot and the people of Treaty 7 region in southern Alberta. The city of Chester is also home to the city nation of Alberta Region Number 3. Before we begin, I would like to point out that given the COVID-19 pandemic and health orders in place, we're conducting this meeting through electronic means. This means that the rest of council and most of administration are participating through technology. You can visit the agenda package on the city's website for more information on how to participate in today's meeting. With that, let's begin. So we'll move on to B, which is the adoption of the agenda. Counsel, any changes or additions, deletions to today's agenda? I'll look for hands. Counselor Folt, are you just gonna wave your hand, or you use the hand on the computer?
I'm just gonna wave to you.
Okay, that'll be the meeting?
Yep.
Okay, Jillian's got the key nine, she'll be watching. Okay, I don't see anything from counsel, Mr. Morton.
Thank your worship, we do have three amendments. And to list those amendments and provide the the FOI, references to those, I'm gonna pass it over to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Those items addressed are add item N5 under main camera, which is section 16 under FOI, business interests, and this is with regards to the sale of City Hall. Adding N6 under main camera, under section 24 FOI, advice from official being emergency management. And then adding F3 under the consent agenda, letters of approval from CMRV regarding the IREF application.
Thank you. Any clarification required on that? We've got two additional in camera, five and six, and we got one addition to F3, which is part of the consent approval. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as modified. And again, Counselor Ryan?
Yes, I move that the agenda be adopted as modified.
Thank you. Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you. C, awards and proclamations. We have no awards or proclamations for today. We'll move on to D, adoption of the minutes. First, we have the regular meeting of council, May 5. Deputy Mayor Young?
I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated May 5, 2020.
Thank you. Call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. D2 is committee of the whole meeting of council, May 12. Counselor Bernas?
I move that we adopt the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from May 12, 2020.
Thank you. Call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. That's carried. With that, we can move on to E, business arising of the minutes. Any comments pertaining to the action list? So I think Counselor Bernas, your hand is from the previous... Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to F, the consent agenda, and I'll remind you again, we just had the IREF just received from the Calgary Metropolitan Region Board, which shows that it's been approved. So that's great news. Look for a motion to receive. Counselor Ryan?
Let's move that council receive items F1, 2, and 3 as information, from the consent agenda as information.
Thank you. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, question period. Next, we have question period. As indicated on the city's website, due to the COVID-19 situation, residents are asked to submit their questions by emailing legislationinfo@chestamere.ca. I ask the administration, please read out the question one at a time, if any.
Thank you, your worship. At this time, we have received no questions.
Thank you. That allows us to move on to H. And that's staff reports for information. Seeing none, move on to move on to I. Staff reports for decision, and we have I1, boat decontamination station. Rick, Van Gelder is gonna present. Rick, are you on the air?
I am, sir. Can you hear me?
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I hope everyone's doing well. Please note that all my comments pertaining to this item will be made through the CAO, to the chair, and to all members of council. I know you have a long agenda tonight, and so far you've been flying through it, so I'll try to keep this short for you as well, too. I just wanna start out by saying that that aquatic invasive species have the potential to be a serious problem in our waterways. Not only is Chester Lake a key component to recreation here in the city, but it plays a large role in agricultural community. Invasive species such as erosion milfoil and zebra mussels are spread mainly through trailered watercraft through most of North America. Although not in Alberta yet, prevention is our best strategy to protect our water streams. The Clean Drain Dry program is vital to increase compliance with invasive species rules and regulations. I just wanted to share a photo with you, if I could. Let me know if you can see it or not. Yep. So, what we are proposing in partnership with the Western Irrigation District, and subject to obtaining some grant funding, we would like to install a boat decontamination station at John Peak Park Boat Launch. This is a solar-powered, waterless cleaning system. It will be free-to-use, user-operated cleaning equipment. That includes wet/dry vac, a blower system, and various hand tools and lights. Although it is not the perfect system when it actually comes down to killing mussel larva, we feel that this is a step in the right direction in the Clean Drain Dry program. So our ask is, the funding for this, we are going to apply for grant funding through the Canadian Agricultural Partnership Risk Mitigation Stream, it's a mouthful, which would cover 50% of this unit. Western Irrigation District, subject to approval by their board, would contribute 25%. And subject to approval by council, the city of Chester could contribute 25%. The city's portion of this, dollar-wise, would be $12,000, who is the city's 25% portion, which could come from our funds remaining in our dam remediation projects. And with that, I'm not sure if Dave McCallister, General Manager of Western Irrigation District, he was gonna try to be online as well, too, if you had any questions. I'm open to questions, and I don't know, maybe Jillian can ask if she got in touch with David or not.
Thank you. Rick, Jillian, is Dave with us?
I have not.
Okay, we don't have him on the line.
Okay, so I guess, with that being said, I'm open to questions.
Okay, well, thank you for the report, Counsel. This is our time to ask questions. I'll look for the hand. Counselor Kind?
Hi, through your worship to the CAO and to Rick. Can you tell me what other municipalities are using this system?
Thanks for the question. I don't believe, actually, this is a fairly new system. It comes out of Minneapolis, I believe. I did reach out to Nicole from Alberta Environment to get her feedback on this. I never heard anything back. I think it's used quite widely in the US, but I can't confirm if there's anybody in Canada using it yet.
Can I have a follow-up?
Follow-up, please.
And can you tell me how this came about? Like, how did you guys hear about this? Like, what research was done?
Thanks again. So what happened was, my integrated pest management employee was at a conference on invasive species, an Alberta conference. One of the presenters presented this unit. And then, so we kind of had it on our, on the side desk for a while. We thought about it, and we got some pricing for it. And then, in conversation with David from Western Irrigation, he also brought it up about six months later. And it turned out that we were looking at the same piece of equipment. And then, that's when we sort of had a conversation about partnering up between him and I, or Western Irrigation and the city, I should say. And then, he mentioned that there was some grant funding available that we could go after.
Thank you.
Questions, but I'll wait my turn.
Thank you. I got the Counselor Bernas?
Thank you, through your worship to the CAO, to Rick. You did mention something about it not being the most effective way to deal with mussel larvae, I think you called them. And I noticed on some of the emails back and forth with the watershed committee, there were people that were also concerned about that. Can you just talk a bit about whether this would give people a false sense of security? I know you did notice, you did mention as well that it was still a good first step. Can you kind of talk around that a bit for me?
Sure. The thing is with the mussel larva, it is very small, and it can be in crevices. And as you've probably noticed in that conversation, it was heat, like pressurized heat, like a pressure washer, which would be the best thing. So, yes, this unit doesn't address that. I know if you've seen the ones on the side of the road, that's all that they do have is a pressure washer. They don't really have vacuum or compressed air or hand tools. So although it's not going to get maybe 100% of the larva, the main thing is to get it off of the boat. And even if it's a compressed air and a dry vac, I think the most important thing is to get as much, to get people thinking about cleaning their boat. And it's about cleaning it before they put it in our water. Again, I don't know if there is 100% unit out there, but I think everything that we can do is a good thing.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Kind?
Through your worship to the CAO and to Rick. Do we know, do we know how much milfoil or mussels we have in our lake?
We actually have nothing in Alberta yet. So that's the thing, it's quite, it's prevalent in North America, but it's not really reached Alberta yet. That's why there's been so many stations around the province. So I think that's all the more reason why to be proactive about it.
And does this system do anything for flowering rush?
No, this is, this is all about, well, yeah, I should be careful what I say there. I think this is all about cleaning the boats. Flowering rush is a whole different beast that seems to be carried by the, by the water. So, in all the trials that we've done with flowering rush, we found that the best way to alleviate that is to buy mechanically digging it out. And I don't typically think that it gets transported on boat trailers.
Can I have a follow-up question, your worship?
Yep, follow-up, please.
So can you tell me how, how this will work, Rick? Because typically, the issues come when people are coming from a different, is it not a different province? So can you tell me sort of what, what this will look like if it's, if it's free and sort of optional? What is going, what's the plan in place that people are going to actually use it?
Well, I, I think at the boat launch now, they have quite a large component of education. And they do ask people questions on if their boats have been out of province or in another body of water. And if they have, asking them also if they've been through a boat inspection station. If that is the case, if they were out of province, we would direct them, my plan is, or my thought would be, to direct them to the decontamination station and to get them to do an inspection and a clean of their boats before they put it in the water. If you know the layout of John Peak Park, I think maybe good location would be sort of on one side of that island. So people have the potential to clean their boats on their way out as well. We've been doing an educational Clean Drain Dry program with the boat launch for, I think, two seasons now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a question for Rick. Can you bring some clarity to the financial impact? Again, you talked about grant funding, dam remediation project. Can you just go over the funding proposal?
Sure. The funding from our side, so we did have a dam remediation project, project number 6724057. It was basically when we did the plastic pellet cleanup along the south shore. So with that project, we actually still, we were totally underspent on that. We have funds in that still, and I would propose that our $12,000 contribution could come from that project.
Okay, that's where I was just a little confused, because the, I look at the recommendation, it talks about successfully obtaining grant funding, but we already have that funding.
Well, no, the thing is, so WID has a board meeting, I believe, tomorrow night, so they have to get approval for their 25%. And we still do have to apply for the grant fund from the Canadian Agricultural Partnership. So, and that is, that covers 50% of the cost of this whole unit, so.
So there's a successful grant funding from the first component? Will come from what's already in hand from the dam remediation project?
Right. So without the 50%, I don't think WID's in it either.
Okay, so okay, we got the Counselor Kind? Are you up again, Counselor Kind?
I am.
Okay, Counselor Kind, and then Mr. Morton?
Through your worship to the CAO and to Rick. I want to know when, when this would arrive, if this all goes through. But also, how is this different from people going to the car wash, for example?
Good question. Delivery, I'm not sure, delivery, I haven't sort of, I haven't spoken to the supplier yet myself. I know Dave, he might have been able to answer that question better than I. So I can't confirm if it would be this season or a next season or not. And really, I don't know, I think as far as the car wash, I think this is more of a convenience thing, having it right at the boat launch. If people are gonna come spend the day at the lake, I think they're gonna come straight to the boat launch. I don't, I have a feeling they're not gonna stop at the car wash, they'll wait in line first. I don't know, I think it's I think it's just a good step in the right direction, and it's convenient. People are all about convenience. And if they have to go out of their way, I'm not sure they will, but if they have to drive by and it's pretty much in their face, I think they'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morton?
Thank you, worship. I think we have the good luxury right now of having a lake that we're all able to enjoy that isn't infected with zebra mussels. And the real question is, should always be, are we doing enough to protect the lake from zebra mussel infestation? Because if we do get a zebra mussel infestation, the lake as we know it today will not be the same. Having gone tours of lakes and been through multiple seminars about what happens with lakes that are infested with zebra mussels, the economic impacts are tremendous, and the joint validity of the lake is dramatically changed. Simply because of how they spread, they ruin docks, they clog boats, they infest all the way up into municipal piping systems. If they get into the pipes, you are in deep trouble from a financial perspective, having to do regular maintenance and cleaning. And we're, and fishing would not be the same, the natural habitat of the lake would not be the same. So, given the fact that we have, you know, there are signs everywhere about protecting the province from zebra mussels, it's just a matter of time before we get zebra mussels into the province. And so, from our lake's perspective, doing everything we possibly can to try and make sure that boats are properly sanitized and cleaned and washed down before they go into the lake is just a, is a small but very important step in trying to protect the lake from an infestation of zebra mussels. And the question would be, you know, should we be requiring all boat launches to have similar type of screening and washing programs in place? Because it's an important, it's an important preventative strategy. And if anyone goes to FCM and they wanna sit in on any of the zebra mussels positions or seminars, there's ample information about it as well. So I'm grateful for this report. Thank you, Rick, and for the opportunity to partner with Western Irrigation District on this this program, which is funded in part by grant dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Counselor Kind, Counselor Bull, Counselor Folt?
Through your worship to the CAO, thank you, Berkeley, for that information. As part of the watershed committee, this is a really important issue, not just mussels, but all sorts of, you know, invasive species. And I would normally be all over this like a dirty shirt. But I feel like there's no research given, there's no I, I don't know the difference from going to the, to the, to the car wash and spraying your car. I don't know the process that's gonna be put in place to, if it's optional. I mean, if people come through the boat launch now and they've been in another lake or province, or whatever the screening process is, I presume they turn them away and they need to go clean their boat. So I just don't, I just don't feel like I have enough information. And it's only $12,000, but combined, it's a lot of money. The grant money is still, you know, somewhere, somehow, people have contributed that money to the government. So I'm excited about this, but I just feel like I just don't know where the research is on it, or so, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Counselor Bull?
Through your worship to the CAO, to Rick, my question is regarding the funds that you say that you have left over from the plastic pellets. I'm just wondering if there is still a process of cleaning up the plastic pellets on the south shore? As I walk along the south shore every day almost, and there still is quite the problem with the plastic pellets along the south shore.
Thank you for that. I, I think in conversation, because mostly that project was undertaken by Western Irrigation District. They took care of all the vac trucks. We just provided mostly hauling of all the product to landfills. City of Calgary took care of all the landfill fees. I think it was a big undertaking last year, but you're right, I don't, I think that is an ongoing project. So I haven't had a, I guess, a recent conversation with Western Irrigation to find out their plan for the year this year. But as far as I know, last year, the conversation was to stay with it. And we were kind of trying to think of ways that we could keep, I guess, the plastic off of the shore, like with a boom system. We haven't really found the best solution yet. But we are still looking at continually cleaning up that shoreline.
Thank you.
Counselor Folt and Counselor Ryan?
Through your worship, through the CAO, to, to Rick. This machine that you're talking about, you say it'll actually wash and vac? And you're, you're gonna do it actually on the pavement down by the boat launch, where excess water will actually flow back into the lake, correct?
To be honest with you, logistics of positioning is not really been fully determined. We're, we're looking at the system in itself. This is waterless, so it is not creating any water. It's compressed air.
Okay.
And it's a wet/vac/dry system, as well as some, like, power or prong tools, picking tools, some scrubber and stuff. I think when it gets down to actual positioning the equipment, I think you're right, you, if there was water, let's say they cleaned it when they took the boat out of the water, I could see maybe doing some sort of a curving system around it, or some sort of containment would make sense. So to be honest with you, you know, this is a new thing that we just haven't figured out all the logistics of it yet. It's just that I think we have this opportunity for grant funding as a very small window that we would try to go after it while we could.
Follow-up?
I think there's a lot of logistics still to be worked out.
Follow-up question? In my past experiences and stuff like that, when I see this machine, and there isn't a whole lot of research, as Counselor Kind had made the comment, and stuff like that. In fact, there's no real firm number. All we're told is that we're going to pay $12,000, and then this other money's gonna come. I, I don't think we have all our ducks in a row here. And from my previous experience with trying to clean things with waterless, I've had some experience with that, with dry car washes type thing. I would suggest that before we spend $12,000 on something like that, we try something that might be a little more affordable and put a little bit of cleaner with it. Because by dry, dry cleaning something, it doesn't, it isn't gonna do the job. I do know that for a fact. I would suggest you buy a hot seat. That has got heat. That's got cleaner, if you wanna put some kind of a cleaner in it type thing. But that will actually do a better job of cleaning the boat. And if you wanna do it down by the lake, that's fine. You can put your containment and put a trade to pull the people in on and vacuum the water up. Whatever you're gonna do. But I, I would suggest that we don't go with this. I really, really do. Because I, I think it's like selling snake oil. I really do. That's my own personal opinion, because I have not gotten any research on this stuff or any information. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do wanna say, we are, we do have a portable hot seat right now on a trailer. So it could be something that we we sort of coordinate the two pieces. So, it could be something that we, we would sort of coordinate the two pieces of equipment. Like you do say, the larva does need the heat and the pressurized water. So, maybe with the hot seat and this as a wet drive vac in combination, it could be something that could work. I agree. You know, we don't have, you know, it'd be nice if I could tell you that it is in, you know, 50 lakes in North America, and these are the results. I know it does have a software component to it that will do some analytics as far as how often it is used, if any of the tools are in disorder, etc. So...
Rick, I do have Counselor Ryan and then Deputy Mayor Young.
Thank you through worship to the CEO, to Rick. Thanks for the presentation. I think we'd all agree that the lake is very near and dear to us. My opinion, I think anything that we do towards enhancing the safety, you know, is a good thing. I think in this case, we're being proactive. I think, as Rick said, this is a good opportunity for grant funding. I think for $12,000, I think it's a reasonable, I won't even call it a risk, but I think it's a reasonable investment. And I think he said it's not the answer to all our prayers, but it's definitely, you know, an answer to some of our prayers. In addition, I look at it as, you know, having a, you know, sometimes, you know, how they have the signs by swimming pools that please take a shower before you jump in. There's research that shows that when people see that sign, when they see that shower, they're more likely to actually stand under the shower before they jump in the pool. So, if anything, you know, to enhance the safety and cleanliness of our lake, you know, obviously, our knowledge about this particular system is limited, but I still have a lot of trust, you know, administration that, you know, they would, you know, do their homework and bring us something that actually, you know, has some use and value. And I think there's definitely some value into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We got Deputy Mary Young.
Thank you, your worship, through you to the CIO, to Rick and all members of council. I'll be in full support of this. I think it's innovative, which is something that we as a council have promised to do in all aspects of what we do. We don't have to wait for someone else to do it. And by the time we wait, we could very well end up with a lake full of some nasty things that we don't want to have in there. And at the end of the day, we, you know, you have to, you know, people, not everybody is honest. So, you're going to ask the question, you know, have you been out of province? Have you recently cleaned your boat? Whatever, right? You know, oh yeah, I cleaned my boat, I haven't been out of province, the way you go. And all it's going to take is one dishonest person to possibly ruin our lake for all of the people who use it frequently. So, this device is there and it's sort of, you know, like the point that Counselor Ryan just made, you know, now we can see that you've just washed your boat instead of believing that you haven't been somewhere or that you have, you know, washed your boat. It's, you know, it's protecting one of our biggest gems of our community. So, I will be in support of this.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bold.
Sorry, I forgot to take my hand down. I apologize.
Okay. And we got Counselor Kind and then Mr. Morton.
To CIO and to Rick. I don't know if the patent pending is an issue or not. Yeah, so that's one comment. But my second is, does it, does it, let's say I'm using this and I'm scrubbing everything off of my boat, is it sucking it all up? Or, because I saw like on one of the videos I watched, there was a scrub brush. Where's it all going? Is it going on the pavement that rain is going to wash into our lake? Where's it going? What kind of drainage system or does it, I don't know how it can contain everything you're getting off your boat or where that stuff's going to land?
Well, it does, it does have a vacuum tank. It does have a vacuum and by weight, what does it say? That the tank will hold about 400 uses. So, it's basically a wet vac. So, if you were, you would be actually sucking and you would be blowing with your compressor parts and just sucking it right up. If your boat is wet, it'll just draw it right up and there's a holding tank there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Counselor Berness. Oh, sorry. Sorry. We got Counselor Foal.
We were talking about we wanted to be proactive in this. Have we looked at any other things? Like, a comment has been made to, that we should, we've got to trust people's honesty and things like that. Coming from a background of seed cleaning and things like that agriculture, we had to be very, very proactive on things like that. And so, when a truck came to my seed cleaning plant, so to speak, and it could be happened with the boat, it's going to happen on the boat, is that there had to be documentation signed from another lake, well, not from another lake, but from where they came from, that that truck was totally scrubbed down and washed before they loaded the grain into it? And that had, that was, that was something that was approved by the provincial government, actually, to stop the spread of blackleg and root rot and stuff like that within the provinces. If we don't have it in our province, why are we not lobbying our government to set up this? If people want to have a boat and want to stick it in different lakes and stuff like that, they have to have a process to have it cleaned before they bring it to the lake. And it has to have an affidavit of certification to prove before you drop it in the lake. I'm not saying that this wouldn't work, but what we did with a lot of outfits is if they weren't cleaned and they didn't meet standards, they had to go over to the car wash and basically spend 100 bucks and wash your truck out before we could even load grain or anything into them. So, that is something that has been done and by the government. And so, that's something I think we need to pursue. Thank you.
I would just comment that the Alberta government does have that clean drain dry program, the boat inspection stations. I know there's one on the west side of the city by, I believe, Callaway Park, by that old Wastel Station there. And there was one on the Strathmore side too. So, they are all over the place, but I, from my understanding is some of that funding is being cut. And so, I think there's less of those inspection stations going forward, but those stations did give certification. So, if you showed up at the boat launch, you would show your documentation. But I know there's one on either end of the city here. So, yeah, it's there.
Okay, thank you. I got Deputy Mayor Young, Bernie, Kathy, Russell, and then I'll wrap up and I'll move on to the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to throw you to the CIO and maybe Kathy Russell. I thought we'd heard in a presentation about mussels somewhere in the course of our term thus far, that you're not supposed to wash them in a car wash, because then they go down the drain and they go into the vast world. So, the whole point of a system like this, which is even on the picture right now, it says that they go into a vacuum tank and then it's emptied at some point. Because if you take it to a car wash and you've got one of those little critters on your boat and you hose it off in a car wash and it goes down the drain there, it ends up somewhere it shouldn't be either. So, I'm pretty sure we've heard, and Kathy can correct me if I'm wrong, that you're not supposed to do that in a car wash.
Kathy?
Good evening, your worship and council. Yes, that's correct. I remember that being not advised, that we would, we shouldn't do it at a car wash. The only other thing I was going to add actually is, I was just reading about the research and when you have the zebra muscle larvae in the ballast tank, they thrive in water and the more water that we can remove from the ballast tank, the more, the greater the chance that the larvae will die. So, it's not, definitely not foolproof, but it's certainly an improvement. And the other point I wanted to make is, just in talking with Nicole for the last couple of years, a big part of clean drain dryer boat is about behavior modification and having that convenience, which is really what Rick spoke to at the very beginning. It's educating people on an ongoing basis about how to properly clean drain and dryer boat. And, you know, I think that that's really, in talking with David McAllister, part of the process. It's not just the scientific removal and, you know, that kind of the technical component. It's the, it's getting people to change their behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. So, just to the point, you know, the efforts from the provincial government and lobbying, I think the provincial government is taking a fantastic lead on invasive species in the province, including invasive mussels species. There's tremendous advocacy campaigns underway. Their website is littered with information. You know, this is part of the reason why there's grant funding to try and work collaboratively. The estimation in our province is that if we did have an infestation, it'd cost us roughly about $75 million a year just in trying to combat it. So, I'm looking at more of the macro as opposed to the micro component of it. And the micro is, you know, this particular cost. From our research and partnering with WID, remember, this is not just us. They have their own team who are also researching this as well and determining if it's valuable for them to protect their lake. Because it is their lake. You know, this is an innovative system that is fairly new. You know, it's about two years old, I think, the technology, and it has been deployed in other places in North America. And so, the question is, if we're not going to be doing something like this, you know, are we going to be making an effort to try and do other things? And that has to be a partnership with the boaters. And so, you know, just having a sign up is one thing, but having the ability to do the, all of the necessary cleaning and draining and drying and disposing component of it is very important. And I do, I do connect with the comments made from Counselor Ryan, that, you know, often people think if it's not right there in your face with the opportunity to, you know, shower before you go into the pool, which is an important part of hygiene, it may slip by some others. So, anyway, administration supports the partnership with WID on this particular purchase. But obviously, it is a budgetary matter that needs to be decided by council if you want to embark on the partnership and the funds for it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Kind, you want to slip one more in? Be generous.
Through your worship to the CIO, I am going to support this. It sounds like all of council, at least most of council wants to. And, and I get it, it's better than having nothing. I would, I would suggest that the process be well thought out, because, you know, there's provincial boat stations that you're required to stop at for a reason, because this isn't something you can just easily do. So, to say, here's a self-serve and optional, I don't think that's good enough. So, it's, it's not, they hide everywhere. So, the average person doesn't know how to properly clean their boat from mussels or whatever it is that's on the boat. So, just, I'll trust that the process will be well thought out.
Thank you. Kathy, Kathy Russell, I do see your hand on the screen. Is that?
No, I made my comments earlier.
Thank you. Can you just take your hand down, please? Okay, with that then, my view on this is that I don't, I don't believe that administration's bringing this to us as an end-all to the fight against everything we're doing to protect the lake. Sometimes it's an unfortunate opportunity. And based on the funding formula and the partnership, which has been alluded to, I certainly will support the notion moving forward on our side of the funding formula. There's still unknowns in regards to the grant. I'm pretty sure WID would be in, but, you know, it's contingent on approvals. But if it is approved, I think it's an opportunity for us to continue to try and enhance our ability to protect the lake. And because it's a partnership, I think, I think we need, we should support it. So, that's my position. With that, thank you very much. Council, on page 27 of 137, we have a recommendation. Someone from council prepared to make a motion. Counselor Berness.
I move that council approve the purchase of the CD3 Water Decontamination Station, subject to the city successfully obtaining grant funding in the amount of $12,000 to be funded by the dam remediation project number 6724057, equaling 25% of the total cost.
Thank you for that. We got a motion on the floor. Any further comments or questions before I call a vote? I need to see the screen, Remy. Need to see the hands. Looking for any further comments, questions? Counselor Foal? No? Okay. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, council, we can move on to I2, Change of Use Liquor Store, 102-272 Kenneburg North Boulevard, DP number 20, 22029/102, discretionary use. And tonight, we have Sarah presenting. Sarah?
Hello.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Can everybody see my screen?
No, we only see you. There, we can see your presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. I'm Sarah Alina, municipal planner with the Community Growth and Infrastructure Department of the City of Chesapeake. Prior to commencement of this presentation, I would like to acknowledge that all of my comments moving forward will be made through our CIO, Mr. Morton, to your worship, Mayor Chalmers, and to all members of council. This is a change of use development permit application for the use of the liquor store with the municipal address 102, 272 Kenneburg North Boulevard, application in the direct control local commercial district on the Kenneburg North commercial site. on the Kenneburg North commercial site. About the proposal, the applicant has applied for a change of use for a liquor store with a total fellow area of one hundred forty square meters. The surrounding land uses are Kenneburg Boulevard, Acoustics School, and R one district, single detached housing to the west, multifamily housing to the north, and existing Alberta Health Services Commercial Building to the south, and R one single detached and R two semi-detached residential to the east of the property. About the zoning, it's the Direct Control Local Commercial District, DCC. The intent of local commercial is to provide a wide range of commercial users, encourage a high-quality aesthetically pleasing pedestrian environment, and encourage a high architectural design standard for buildings. As you see, this is the liquor store site plan. And based on section three point four point one, council shall issue decisions for all development contained within a direct control district. Council decision needs to be sure based on the checklist, which is first, ensure that the change of use application meets the intent and purpose of higher statutory plans. Ensure that the change of use application meets requirements of the land use by law treaty. Ensure that the change of use application meets design criteria of the land use by law and the CD guidelines. This application meets the requirements of the statutory and non-statutory municipal plan, including MDP, Southeast Chesemere Area Structure Plan, Kenneburg North outline plan, land use redesignation, land use by law zero twenty-two dash ten, and Chesemere Design Guidelines. So these developments basically meet all the requirements of the land use by law and the other bylaws in the city. About the parking considerations, there are sixty-seven parking stalls available in total on the site, and the change of use application requires four parking stalls. Therefore, ample amount of parking is available on site. The difference between change of use application and development permit application, which we are dealing with right now, is for any new construction development permit, all of the permit aspects are required to be considered. Whereas for any change of use application, only user specifics and parking requirements will be considered. Also, the development will be evaluated based on the effects on the surrounding neighboring properties. So basically, we need to consider all development aspects and based on the decision from the planner on the application, we recommend a decision. This is the architectural drawing, as you see, for the liquor store. This application has been presented to council at the DP level back in March. So the state has decided to change the location of the liquor store to near to the interest on the commercial plaza. We don't see any negative effects at all. These are the elevations. And these are the material board, which will be used for the construction. And they have different colors and they have good quality material. Different colors bring more interest and variety in the commercial area and especially during the winter. Colors bring more interest and welcoming environment to the surrounding neighbors. This is the three-D rendering from the whole plaza and the liquor store, which is going to be on the unit's line area on the left-hand side. About this public engagement, the city, we decided to inform all the neighboring properties and we send a landowner notification letters on April twenty-eighth. Here is the copy of the notification letter to all adjacent neighboring property. And the circulation was completed on May thirteenth at four thirty PM. Today, we didn't receive any comments. Actually, at three thirty-five this afternoon, I received an email from one of the residents. And they have some concerns regarding the hours of operation for the liquor store. So I can read through the email that I received from one of the residents. He says, my main concern is that if there is a liquor store that is open late, it will result in groups of people hanging out late at night in the parking lot. I am worried that this will result in significant noise late at night in the neighborhood, which would be disruptive to the residents. I am hoping that the liquor store hours can be limited to discourage this. And basically, the response from the developer in that regard is the hour, according to the AGLC, is allowance up to two AM. And our liquor store will only be open until latest midnight, twelve AM. In addition, we will have that make it the owner's responsibility to control people hanging outside and making noise. There will be no issue of this type as bylaws will be there to enforce the compliance. About the benefit, commercial uses, uses situation within the heart of the residential communities offer a walkable community amenity to meet the various needs of the surrounding residents. The change of use application will generate tax revenue for the city by increasing non-residential development in the area. About the alignment, we had based to amazing Chesemere. This liquor store will promote partnerships by exploring innovative business models, improve relationships. For example, it can serve the customers with excellence. It also improves the quality of life, providing high-quality services and amenities in the neighborhood. Council options, that's council afro DP twenty dash twenty-two zero twenty-nine slash one oh two, change of use liquor store with the municipal address one oh two dash two hundred seventy-two, Kenneburg North Boulevard, subject to the conditions from one to fourteen. Thank you for your time and interest in this presentation, your worship and members of council.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, when you were speaking to the citizen objection or concern, you were breaking out electronically, cutting. Can you review that again for everyone?
Yes, definitely.
Then you received another document, but you weren't coming in, you were broken. I want to make sure that all of council had this.
I received the email from one of the residents at three thirty-five PM today. His concern is basically about the hours of operation for the liquor store in the neighborhood. He says, my main concern is that if there is a liquor store that is open late, it could result in groups of people hanging out late at night in the parking lot. I am worried that this will result in significant noise late at night in the neighborhood, which would be disruptive to the residents. I am hoping that the liquor store hours can be limited to discourage this. That was the email from the resident.
And did you say there was a reply?
I actually asked the resident right after about his meaning, like, what does it mean late at night? Because, like, as the rules and regulations say, for example, two AM, they can still be open. Here, they mentioned that the liquor store is just going to be open until midnight, twelve AM. So I, I asked the resident about his point of view about being late at night. I still haven't received any correspondence back.
Okay, so we're clear, the concern was the hours of operation.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks. Okay, counsel, comments, questions for Sarah? Okay, I don't see any at this point in time. As I reviewed the report, first of all, I see a route that Architect Limited is, is the applicant. I know that that company is well-accomplished and very experienced. I also note that the proposal meets all of the land use requirements that we have.
That's correct.
Something that we are tasked with daily is to try and to turn the dial on the, on the ninety-five-five non-residential to resident, get some, some more non-residential versus residential. So clearly, all of these things speak to them. See any other speakers? Okay, counsel, on page thirty-three of one thirty-seven. We have a proposed resolution.
Your worship, your warning?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You kind of broke there. Okay, so yes, a move that council approve, DP number twenty dash two two zero two nine slash one oh two, change of use liquor store, one zero two dash two seven two, Kenneburg North Boulevard, subject to the recommendation conditions one to fourteen to the staff report dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, counsel. We have a motion on the table. Any further comments or questions before I call a vote? Seeing none, thank you. So I'll call a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Okay, counsel, we can move on to, sorry, I three, removal of the action list. And tonight, Julian?
Thank you, worship. Please note that all my comments are being made through the chair and all of the council. As you recall, at the May twelfth committee, the whole meeting, staff provided a requested report on park shelters, which was accepted for information and no further action was requested from council at that time. With that, administration is requesting that council acknowledge the completion of this item and remove it from the action list.
Okay, thank you for that, counsel. This is to remove that item from the action list. Counselor, kind?
Sorry, if you said my name, I didn't hear you. I move that council acknowledge the completion of action item three nine five dash nineteen, park shelters and direct administration to remove the item from the action list.
Thank you. Call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? In favor? That's good. Okay, we do not have any public hearings tonight. So we can move on to K, bylaws, K one, first reading of bylaw zero one one dash twenty, amendment of land use bylaw zero two two dash ten, as amended, land use redesignation from direct control R dash one EN to R dash one EM. Carl is presenting. Carl?
Good evening, your worship and members of council. I'll just bring up my presentation here and share my screen. Is everyone able to see my screen? PowerPoint slide, okay?
Nope. We can see you.
All right. Obviously, it didn't work.
There we go.
And, and are you seeing? Ah, there you go. Okay, so thank you very much. Staff is here this evening to present the bylaw zero zero, zero one one dash twenty for first reading. This is a staff-initiated land use bylaw amendment application and land use redesignation from direct control R one EM to standard R one EM. The first part of this bylaw addresses a redesignation of twenty-one lots from DC R one EM to R one EM. Those are lots two to twelve, block ten, three to six, block thirteen, six to eight and twenty-one to twenty-three, block twelve, all of plan one eight one two zero zero eight. The second part is delegation of approving authority for development permit applications in single-detached direct control districts to the development officer. And this bylaw is in response to direction the council gave administration in February of this year to look at single-detached direct control residential districts and look for opportunities to pull some of those lots out of direct control. The first area that our department looked at was Kenneburg North Phase Six. And that is indicated on the map that you can see there as letter B. It's a strip of properties zoned DC R one E. And they're located fronting opposite East Lakeview, East Lakeview Road Estate District. There are architectural controls on those lots specifically to address that interface with the estate district across the street. This area is about eighty percent built out. There are only three vacant lots remaining. And staff felt that this area was not suitable for removal from direct control for two reasons. First of all, the architectural controls in frontage adjacent, or frontage opposite the estate district means that there is value in retaining direct control for these lots. The second is that the majority of the landowners in that area were held to a particular standard. And it would be appropriate for consistency purposes to hold the last remaining, the three remaining lots to that same standard in that area. The second area we looked at was Kenneburg South Phase One. These are direct control R one E lots as well. There were six of them originally developed. They've already been removed from direct control in twenty nineteen by bylaw zero one five dash nineteen. And they were re-designated R one EM at that time. What we noticed was that from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, only one lot was developed while those lots were under direct control. Once direct control was removed, two housing starts began in the second half of twenty nineteen. So that gives us a bit of an indication that removal from direct control helps make these residential lots more marketable and will help them develop out faster. That brings us to the third area, which is the subject of this bylaw. This is Kenneburg Phase Seven, and these lots are designated DC R one EM. They are indicated by letter C on the map to the left. They're also highlighted in green in the center map. And then the map on the right shows the setback distances in relation to the Lake Air residents that are adjacent to the west. You'll see that the rear yards of these lots share a rear property line with the Lake Air residents. And the Lake Air homes are set back about fifty-nine to seventy-three meters from that shared rear lot line. So the impacts of these lots are not considered to be significant as well. There are ten vacant lots in this area. So eleven have been developed or at least approved. There are ten vacant lots in this area, so eleven have been developed or at least approved. Ten are remaining vacant. And the regulations of the D C R one E M district mirror those of the standard R one E M district. So this is the best candidate for removal from direct control. What you'll see here on the left are the R one E M district regulations. And just for reference, on the right, you can see the direct control R one E M district that highlighted the fact that the permitted and discretionary uses of the standard R one E M district apply to the direct control. And also that the regulations of the R one E M district all apply to the direct control version as well. So there is little value in retaining direct control on these sites as it only affects who the approving authority is. That brings us to the second part of the bylaw, which is delegation of approving authority from council to the development officer for single-detached residential direct control districts. The First Amendment we propose to make is to section three point two point three F to stay, say that the development officer shall refer applications for development permits in the non-residential direct control district to council for a decision. We understand that council would like to retain control of decision-making authority for non-residential direct control districts. The Second Amendment would be to add subsection G. The development officer shall refer applications for development permits within the following residential direct control districts to council for a decision. Here we've listed D C R one E for those three remaining lots that are not appropriate for removal from direct control, as well as the higher-density residential districts, the R two, the R three, and R four direct control versions. Then we would add subsection H. The development officer shall issue decisions on development permit applications within all residential direct control districts, except those specified in three point two point three G above. The reason why we've set it up this way is that it would allow us to make adjustments to where that decision-making authority is delegated to the development officer and where it is not. Through a very simple amendment to the land use bylaw by adding or removing districts from these lists, rather than getting into a bunch of convoluted bylaw amendments. Finally, the addition of three point four point three, notwithstanding three point four point one, council delegates its approving authority to the development officer for all applications referred to in three point two point three H. Now, that is mainly just for consistency, to make sure that all areas of the land use bylaw align. In terms of aligning with pathways to amazing Chestamere, this bylaw would maximize efficiency by reducing red tape in our application process. It would empower staff to be more outcome-focused in making the decisions on development permit applications in these low-density residential districts. And that would lead to improved customer service because applicants would have a faster turnaround time and they would have more certainty knowing that there's an appeal period to decisions made by the development officer. And that would help them make those lots more marketable. This bylaw was circulated to internal departments. The public hearing will be advertised in Chestamere Anchor for two consecutive publications. It will also be advertised on city webpage. And direct notifications of the public hearing will be sent to affected and adjacent landowners, as well as to build Calgary and the list of known developers in Chestamere as a way of indicating that we are making some efforts to reduce red tape and also just for awareness of procedural changes in municipality. So in summary, this bylaw would redesignate twenty-one lots from D C R one E M to R one E M. And it would delegate the approving authority for development permit applications in single-detached direct control residential districts to the development officer. Options for council this evening are the council, option A, the council give first reading to bylaw zero-one-one dash twenty as presented. Option B, the council tables the bylaw and directs staff to return with further information. Or option C, the council defeats bylaw zero-one-one dash twenty. And I now conclude my presentation and I'm open to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Carl, for that presentation and thank you for doing the research that council asked you or the team to do. Looking for hands regarding comments, questions? Don't see any, but I'd just like to indicate that I do agree with leaving the remaining three in the area highlighted as B. That will prove out for consistency, but clearly the area that is being identified, we have that opportunity to, in your words, cut the red tape. Any further comments, questions? Counselor, vote?
Yes, your worship, to the CEO, to Carl. I agree with with the mayor on his comments concerning those other three lots and stuff like that. The question I have is about if we're going to turn this over to a person to approve it like within the planning department, things like that. Are the considerations for parking regulations and all that sort of stuff going to be reviewed down the road for 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 some of these developments or not?
Okay, thank you for that. Through Mr. Morton, you can assign that to Carl or yourself.
I'll sign that to Carl. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So through the chair to address Counselor Folt's question. When new housing applications come in for these lots, the development officer will review the merits of each application against the requirements of the land use district and against the policy direction of the applicable outline plan and area structure plan. If we were going, if planning was going to look at something like parking requirements, we would approach that more comprehensively, looking at the parking requirements of single-detached residential districts in general, more specifically. But we wouldn't change the parking requirements on a case-by-case basis.
So for clarity, we're just changing the decision maker, not the land use bylaw.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much.
I was looking for Carl to confirm.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Don't see any other comments or questions. We are looking for first reading and then we'll move on to the public hearing. So with that, I'll look for someone to move. Deputy Marion?
I move that council give first reading to bylaw zero-one-one dash two zero being a bylaw to amend the land use designation of lots two through twelve, block ten, lots three through six, block thirteen, lot six through eight, and lots twenty-one to twenty-three, block twelve, plan one eight one two zero zero eight, from direct control R dash one E M, D C R dash one E M to residential estate modified district R dash one E M and to delegate approving authority for development permit applications within single-detached residential direct control districts to the development officer as presented.
Thank you. I'll look for hands. Is there any further comments or questions regarding the motion for the first reading? I'm seeing none. With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. We have a second motion? Deputy?
Sorry, I move that council schedule a public hearing for bylaw zero-one-one dash two zero to take place on June sixteenth, twenty twenty, to begin at six P M.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, we can move on to K two. All readings of bylaw zero-one-three dash twenty procedural bylaw. And tonight presenting, it is noon, Remy?
Good afternoon, members of council. Can everybody hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen here. Can you all see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you, your worship, and good evening, your worship, members of council. Please note that all of my comments pertaining to this item will be made to C O, to the chair, and to all members of council. And before I begin and through the chair, if I could just turn council's attention to page ninety-three of the agenda package. Just let me know when you're there.
So so that's section two, sub W.
W, yes.
Under definitions.
Yes, notice of motion.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. So currently, that read, the motion means a written notice given by a member of council advising that the matter described therein will be brought forward at a subsequent meeting. That the word written should be struck from there. The notice wouldn't require a written notice. The actual motion would require a written notice. So if we could just strike out the word written from there.
Thank you.
I will begin my presentation. As you know, this evening, I'm here to present to you some proposed amendments to council's procedural bylaw. I recommend that council give three readings to bylaw oh thirteen twenty to formally approve the proposed amendments. Administration has conducted a thorough review of the procedural bylaw. And the first draft of the proposed amendments was presented to the committee of the whole on May twelfth. The amendments before you reflect feedback provided by the committee. So the procedural bylaw is really one of the main pieces of legislation that governs all meetings of council. It could be an essential tool for conducting efficient meetings as it outlines a standard procedure that all must follow. And as we grow as a city and become more familiar with these kind of best practices and and we're always looking at areas that could be updated to match those best practices during all meetings of council. Therefore, this bylaw has been amended quite a few times in the past few years, with the last amendment coming just under a year ago. So we're hoping that this is the last one for a while. So most of the public, most of the amendments deal with the public hearing process and just making sure that the bylaw is best tailored to the manner in which council has been conducting its meetings. In terms of the public hearing amendments, there are three main ones that I would like to outline at this time. The first is to include a provision that once a public hearing is closed, it cannot be reopened and that council can no longer accept or consider any additional public submissions. Council already states this at the conclusion of every public hearing, but it has not been included in the procedural bylaw until these amendments. The second proposed amendment is the requirement that those wishing to make representation during a public hearing must register with Legislative Services by twelve P M, the day of any scheduled hearing. Currently, members of the public are not required to register. This is really just so administration has a sense of how many people are expected to attend and speak at a public hearing. And it gives us an opportunity to give the council a heads up as to what can be expected. Clearly, it's quite difficult to anticipate attendance at these meetings. Those who don't register for to speak but show up to speak anyway will only be able to be heard at council's discretion. The third proposed amendment is the limiting of organizations to making only one representation at a public hearing. This wouldn't mean that multiple people from an organization couldn't make representation as a group, but they will not be able to stand up and speak at different times during a hearing and will be subject to the same five-minute time restriction that individuals are. And the real reason for this is for that is to increase the efficiency of these meetings and making sure that they're fair throughout. There's also a few additional amendments I think are worth noting. The first is the addition of a standing declaration of conflict of interest item at the beginning of every council agenda. During this point in the meeting, any council member who believes they may have a conflict of interest, which would also include a pecuniary interest pertaining to any item on the agenda, will be required to declare the nature of their conflict. Should the conflict be pecuniary in nature, that member will be required to excuse themselves from the discussion and vote once council arrives on that item on the agenda as the M G A. I'll also note that should a council member not declare that conflict at this time or just forget to declare it or realize that they have a conflict later on into the meeting, they can still there declare that conflict at any time before the discussion and vote are held. Another amendment worth noting is that a vote to continue to hold a meeting past eleven P M would now have to be a unanimous vote to pass, as opposed to a simple majority as it is now. Some of these meetings begin at three and by the time eleven o'clock rolls around, some members may be too exhausted or not in the right mindset to adequately adequately receive any more information and to make actual informed decisions. In the event that this motion fails, council would simply recess the meeting until a specified time and date through a resolution. There's also some clarity on how items make the action list. So what's being proposed is that before an item is added to the action list, council will direct administration to conduct preliminary work on the matter and provide a a report to council outlining how the item impacts the organization from a levels of service perspective, including any monetary and staff resources that would be required and any other relevant information. Once that report is presented and council has that information, it may decide to direct administration to move forward with the item through resolution, at which time the item would actually be added to the action list. This will allow council to have all of the important facts before making any sort of decision. Administration has also added a couple of definitions within the proposed amendments that will allow clarity to the process in which council defers, refers, and receives matters through motion. I'll go over each one of these just to specify a little bit of detail for you. So the first would be a motion to defer. This motion would mean to delay consideration on a matter by postponing that consideration either indefinitely until a specified time, until a specified event happens, or until a specific report is presented. What council has been using as a motion to table and what's defined in the bylaw currently is really a motion to defer. The only difference is that a motion to defer would be debatable and it does not need to be lifted from the table as the matter wouldn't have been tabled in the first place. The second definition is for a motion to refer. This would provide a formal mechanism for in which council would refer a matter to staff or a committee for additional information or a recommendation. This motion would have to include a date in which the information or a recommendation is to be brought back to council. And the third definition is a motion to receive. This motion is used by council to simply acknowledge that an item or report with no additional action being required from staff unless specific direction is given from staff members. This is usually used when council receives a report for information. And then really, lastly here is the amendments also propose the inclusion of a definition for point of privilege, which provides council members with a formal mechanism to request the chair to immediately consider and take action to remedy a situation in which a member believes that their integrity or the integrity of council as a whole has been impugned. So just to give an example of this, say, counselor one believes that counselor two has misquoted them during a deliberation. Counselor one could raise a point to the chair and then the chair would allow counselor one to make their point. And then based on that, that point of privilege will be recorded into the minutes. And then any action taken by the chair to remedy that situation would also be be recorded in the minutes. So if the chair believes sustains a point of privilege, yes, that this is, I think that occurred. Counselor two, please offer a formal apology or retract your statement. That would be recorded into the meeting minutes. If counselor two decides, nope, I'm not going to apologize or I'm not going to retract my statement, that will also be recorded into the minutes as a non-compliance, which brings in a bigger kind of situation where it's breach of the breach of the procedural bylaw and maybe even breach of the code of conduct. So that can just kind of escalate there, but hopefully the point of privilege allows us to not have any code of conduct breaches as it will give council an opportunity to rectify any sort of situation during a meeting. In terms of the proposed amendments, those are really all of them. The rest are kind of housekeeping ones. Due to the number of changes at this time, administration is recommending that council give three readings to a new bylaw, being bylaw oh thirteen twenty and that the bylaw, and bylaw oh thirteen nineteen be repealed. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Well, thank you, Remy, and I'll go back to your comment regarding. Well, thank you, Rami, and I'll go back to your comment regarding, uh, the eleven P M. cutoff. Some might argue that we're not necessarily in the right frame of mind before eleven, let alone after. As all the information council that we have, we've had a, uh, view of this at our committee of the whole. So at this point in time, I'll open it up for comments or questions. So I got councillor Berness, councillor Bold, and councillor Kind.
Thank you through the chair to the C A O and to presenter and council. So, um, as you may or may not know, I missed the last meeting, and I have reviewed it thoroughly so that I know what was discussed. I particularly appreciate the unanimous vote for the eleven P M. because I get cranky and tired, and my brain doesn't work very well at that time of night. Especially the ones that started at five, or at three, rather. The other one, the, uh, standing declaration of conflict of interest. I really appreciate that because I sit on pins and needles until I know there's something coming up. So I have, quite organically, I might add, and the fact that I sit next to the legislation clerk, been doing this, if I know that there's something coming up, you know, tell me when, tell me when, tell me when. So this is a more formal way, and I very much appreciate that. That would be my main. Yeah. Oh, the action list one, I really like that too. But overall, it's, it's a great document. Thank you so much for the work on it.
Thank you for the comments. Councillor Bold.
Through your worship to the C A O, to Rami. My question, yes, we did go through this quite carefully at the, at the last committee of the whole meeting. Rami, would you do me a favor and pull up the public hearing, the slide you had that showed the, um, one, two, three, about giving the heads up, and I'm sorry, there was no number on the bottom that I could remember the page. So, yes, that one. No, not that one. Yes, I think. Yes. So I just want to make a comment about this particular page. Uh, I understand public hearings, and I understand this whole bylaw, I like a lot of the things that you, you, you've, you've done here. My concern here, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm just want to express this, is number two, those wishing to make representation during a hearing must pre-register with legislative services. I believe that there are occasions and circumstances where people don't realize that they must register prior to this. And I, 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 I would like to see that not be there. I mean, we're elected by people. We should be able to take a last minute question if it comes in, or, but that's just, that's just my, my, uh, my opinion. And, um, I am going to vote for this because I do think that the majority of it is good, but I feel very strongly about number two there, and I disagree with it. Thank you.
So just on the matter of process, councillor Bold. After we've had our chance to, uh, ask questions of Rami on the presentation, we'll move to, uh, first reading. And once first reading, um, has been put on the table, then there's an opportunity to make adjustments prior to following the vote on first reading. And we would vote on each motion. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments. Um, councillor Kind.
Through your worship, uh, to the C A O and to Rami. Thank you, Rami. You did a great job of representing everything we expressed. Uh, I have a couple of comments, so I'll see how much the mayor will let me express. There's only three, actually. The first one, uh, I really feel strongly that question, people are only allowed now to come and ask questions pertaining to the agenda, and it never used to be like that. They could ask questions pertaining to anything of public interest. And I really feel, feel strongly that that should not be changed. If somebody takes the time to show up to any of our meetings to make a question or a comment about, uh, anything in, in public interest, they should be able to do that. It doesn't mean we're going to answer it right then and there, but they should be able to speak freely. So I totally disagree with that. Your worship, I'm not sure if, well, you've obviously read it, but it says that if somebody wants to speak for longer than five minutes, um, all of council has to give a general consensus. I feel that that should just be your decision to let them go on or not. And then my last comment is, uh, that now we can add an item to new business and make a formal decision on it. And I don't agree with that either. I would not, I would not my council to be able to add something last minute to the agenda that I didn't have any notice of and be able to make a decision on it. So those are my three comments, because that is new. Never used to be like that.
Okay, thank you. And again, um, we get the point, we can put first reading, um, on the, put first reading on the table, there's an opportunity to, um, make a motion for any change that you wish, and then it'll be deliberated on and voted on, then we'll move on. And once we're finished that, then we'll go back to the original motion. Deputy Mayor Young.
Thank you, your worship. Um, so through you to all council. I'm, I was glad to see this, um, come forward. I think there was some good changes. I think there were some things that stayed the same, that should stay the same. I, I think the, the, um, we should always take questions from the public. I'll say that. But I think the, the point of a public hearing is it's a separate meeting. It has a separate agenda, and very few people, like, people usually come to the public hearing for the intent of that specific agenda with that, you know, specific item. And I think it would, um, you know, a, at a regular meeting of council, of course, come and ask anything. It's not something that's on the agenda. But for a public hearing, the, the conversation, I think it almost has to stick to what the public hearing, um, is, is about unless I'm, I'm wrong. But I think usually, you know, they're separated agendas and separate for, for a reason, and I don't think we would necessarily, I don't, I don't think I've ever been in a public hearing where someone's come with a question that wasn't for that reason. So I mean, I'm good with it either way, but I, I think it's fine the way it is. I, I don't know that there's much that I would change because I think the public hearing process is very, um, specific in nature.
Thank you very much. Councillor Berness, and then Mr. Morton. Also Berness.
My apologies, I didn't unha- unraise my hand.
Oh, okay. Mr. Morton.
Uh, thank you, worship. So public hearings are referenced specifically in the M G A. They're also part of a statutory process. So you'll recall that when you're doing public hearings, they are a separate, they're, uh, independent of your council meeting, and they have to be, uh, set a specific time. And so what we've been doing is we've been incorporating public hearings into, uh, your council meeting. And so to know just how long you need your public hearing to be, uh, a best practice is by having those wanting to speak, um, to register in advance. Now, that doesn't mean that at the discretion of the chair, you can allow someone else to speak at the discretion of the chair. But remember, public hearings are separate from your council meetings. There's statutory, uh, hearing that have a specific, uh, date and time. So, that is a best practice. It's not required that they register, but, you know, you could set a public hearing and, uh, for a specific period of time, and then you don't have enough time to complete the public hearing, and then you're into your other, uh, meeting, or you may set a public hearing for a si- set specific time, and then you're sitting around and waiting until. So that's, that's all. It's, there's no attempt whatsoever to try and limit the public's participation. It's only to allow for, um, ease of scheduling, of conducting the meeting. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. We have, uh, councillor Bold.
Through your worship to the C A O. If, if there's no attempt to limit the public's participation, why then do they have to register? And I also would just like to state that I very much agree with councillor Kind's comments, uh, that she made earlier regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First your comments.
So I, um, I'm happy to answer that if she wants. If the councillor wants. Is that a question to me, councillor Bold?
Yeah.
I understand it makes for, uh, more cohesive, uh, public hearing to have them register. But I don't think that it should be an absolute mandatory that they have to register. That's my opinion.
With that, um, I do have Jillian, uh, that advises she can bring some clarity to that. Jillian?
Thank you, your worship. It's through Mr. Moore and through you to the members of council. I would like to draw your attention to one of the, of your agenda package, um, section.
I can't hear her. You hear me okay now?
Sorry, council. If I could just draw your attention to page one oh eight of your agenda package, council, section, um, it's under K, public hearing on page one. And that is number four. It does address, um, anyone who is non-registered, that they may speak at a public hearing at council's discretion. So that is included in there. So that should cover that concern off.
Okay, so there's the ability to, even though you haven't registered, there's still the ability for somebody showing up and wants to speak, we, we can acknowledge them, and they can participate in the public hearing.
And your worship just state something quick. Um, we will definitely communicate this to the public, through our comms team, through our C G I team, the process to register and make sure that people understand that. So I just want to throw that out there.
So, um, to councillor Bold's, that they still have the ability to speak, uh, if they come to council, or in this case, register, um, they can still come, even if they haven't registered, they can still speak to the public hearing.
Correct.
Good. Okay, so thank you. Now, we do have a couple of comments. Uh, we do have councillor Kind.
Through your worship to the C A O and, um, well, specifically to Bernie. Could you comment on the two items that I, uh, made a comment on? I understand that we can add them as a motion later, and we can vote, but I would like your professional input on if, if those are best practices to, um, only let residents ask questions that are on the agenda, which it has not been like that in customary, and to add items to new business with no notice to the public, that we can then make formal decisions on.
So can you just point to the section, the relevant section?
The formal decision one is page twenty or page one ten of the agenda. Adding to new business.
Section P, Bernie?
Sorry, Rami, what? I'm on page one twenty? No.
Page one ten, section P.
Okay.
Yeah. At the very bottom.
Twenty of the redacted.
Okay. P under new business?
Yes.
So that's under, uh, notice of motion, new business. At this point, council may address any items that were brought up after the agenda was adopted. Any items that reside outside of regularly scheduled business may be addressed to your council, may direct administration to complete a task through resolution, which will be put into action list or provide a brief report to council. Under this, this is the change under this section of the regular meeting agenda, council may also make formal decisions through resolutions, and are not only directing administration. So, um, so this is a council meeting. And the whole purpose of council meetings is to make decisions. That's the whole purpose, and we never want to inhibit or limit a council's ability to make a decision. Similarly, so the M G A even allows for special meetings of council to be called outside of, uh, those published, uh, and regular scheduled meetings of council. And so the reason why we allow this is so that a member of council is inhibited in their ability to try and bring something forward to council and to have something, a matter added on to the agenda of council need, or that member of council wants it or needs it to be added on to the agenda and to have it, uh, dealt with. So it's less about, um, anything, it's not about anything else other than empowering a members of council's ability to bring a matter, uh, before the council that they deem to be, uh, important. That's all.
With, but it's being added as new business, so no notice to the public.
Just, yeah, um, maybe there can be some clarity as to what gets added to new business, and Jillian, if through Bernie, and Jillian's prepared to address that if you wish.
It used to say urgent matters.
Well, specifically to urgent matters, that's deemed by council resolution when you drop the agenda. You can either vote in favor of the agenda or not. So the urgent is dealt with when you, if there's something added as of today, like we did today, council, then by resolution determines the agenda. If you don't believe that that should be on the agenda, then you vote against it. Do you have, uh, additional information on new business?
Sure, thank you, your worship. Um, so typically, the purpose of new business is to address any item that may arise following, um, or during the in-camera. Um, as you know, council cannot make any decision in camera. And so the purpose of new business is to provide council with that mechanism. Should there be an important decision to make that arises in camera, that you go into the public and make that decision.
Is there any other time that items get added to new business?
Thank you, your worship. Typically, should there be in, in just there's a conflict with timing of items, if, uh, the in-camera is to take place at the end of the meeting, um, and it's just convenient to already have that item added to the new business for the public to view on the part that we post the agenda. That is the only other time in my knowledge and experience that we add new business.
Is there the opportunity to pull something off the consent agenda for wholesome discussion? Possibly decision if required under new business.
Yes, your worship, that's correct.
So, under consent agenda, if there's an article there, or an item that council wishes to, a council member wishes to, uh, by motion, move it to the new business for a wholesome, wholesome discussion. That can be done by resolution, added to the new business, and then under new business, council has the ability to make a direction if you so wish. Is that correct? So a couple, a couple areas under new business, we can move something out of in camera if there is a need for council to make a decision on something that came up under in camera. We can add that to new business to allow us under the M G A to make that decision. And or pull something from the already approved agenda under consent, move it over to new business for discussion.
Okay.
Can I just add one, your worship, just to Counselor Kind's point?
Thank you.
Counselor Kind was referencing the removal of urgent matters from that. That's actually under a different section. That's on page 98 of your council agenda under six D, which speaks to last minute additions. That actually hasn't been changed. Well, last minute additions were urgent matters that were not scheduled to be addressed. Is that section still here?
Thank you. And if Bernie could ask, answer my first question.
Can we point, can you just point to the page?
It's page 106 of the agenda page. And it's it's under H, question period. So it used to say that basically that the public could address you know, issues that were important to the public. And now it says items that are related to the meeting's agenda.
So it's for clarity, it's under H1?
Yeah. H1. During this section, any member of the public may come forward and ask a question of council. Questions must pertain to items on the meeting agenda and are be directed to the chair. So.
Are you clear, are you clear on the question of Counselor Kind?
Yeah, I am. So. So the whole, the whole concept of question period, as you heard from your interim C A O, and as you also heard from Mr. Cuff, is atypical in any municipality. And just because it's atypical doesn't mean that it's wrong. It just means that it's something that's unorthodox. And so the real question really for council is what is the purpose of the question period? And you know, the evolution of the question period, from what I understand is that under you know, previous councils and previous terms of council, the public didn't feel that they had an adequate voice. And so this is your opportunity. The challenge is not what you're trying to accomplish, which is being available and open to the public. The challenge is that, at least from from my vantage point, is that the public attend question period and they expect their question to be answered at that moment. And we just simply don't have the ability to provide those answers, right? It's not often you hear in in parliament, you know, people ask questions, but they don't get answers. And then there's criticism from the public saying this is called question period and you know, presumably there's going to be an answer. The challenge is that we often don't have the opportunity to be able to provide that answer to them. And then they walk away and then they they feel unsatisfied. Even though we do endeavor to get back to them quickly with an answer by way of an email, but questions usually prompt an answer. So in this particular case, if we know that the question is about something specifically that's on the agenda, we're simply better positioned to be able to answer those particular questions. And if a member of the public wishes to have something added on to an agenda at any point in time whereby there can be dialogue and interaction, then that is a process that is facilitated through members of council by adding items on to the agenda and giving us the opportunity to do the proper research, whether it's through notice of motion, whether it's through new business, whether it's through a regular resolution of council to put something on the agenda. So this is about efficiency of council meetings and allowing members of council to utilize your tools to facilitate proper engagement with the public. So I just feel somewhat handcuffed whenever members of the public come forward and they ask a question. And I just don't have those answers available. And often people will, why don't you? You're the C A O. You know, there's a lot of things to know. So. Anyway, so that is, that is a practice that is often when there's the public addressing members of council on items. It's specific to items that are on the agenda. But then again, this whole notion of question period is fairly new and in our industry. Not necessarily a bad thing. It's just new.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. You have any further comments or questions? Seeing none? Okay. Okay, counsel. So at this point in time, I'm prepared to receive a motion for reading. So just indicate the counselor votes left the meeting at the time. Can Counselor Folks still participate? At this point in time, I'm just going to take a two-minute recess to explore whether Counselor Folks left the meeting. So we're taking a two-minute recess. Okay. I'm going to reconvene at PM. Counsel or member to moving on the floor. For a council member to put first reading on the floor.
Your worship, sorry, it's Michelle. I just messaged Jillian. I'm hearing that the live stream is off.
Just thank you, Deputy Mayor Young. It is just delayed, so it's back on now. It's just delayed by two minutes, so it's back on now.
Okay, so we're live streaming. We're convened. There you go. No further comments or questions on the presentation. We're we're to move to first reading. Put on the floor. For consideration. Deputy Mary Young.
I move that council give first reading of bylaw 013-20 being the procedural bylaw as presented.
Good to go, Michelle.
So with that, so we have the first reading on the on the floor. With that, I'm going to ask, is there any council member that wishes to make any changes for consideration? We have Counselor Ryan and Counselor Kind.
Sorry, worship. I just was the second, ready for the second reading. I don't have a comment.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I got Counselor Kind.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to make a motion to remove on number eight, H I. The words, things must pertain to items on the meeting agenda.
Action number?
Number, it's page 106 of the agenda. Page 16 of the redacted bylaw.
Section A H I.
Yeah.
Okay, under we have a motion by Counselor Kind. You run that again?
To remove the words pertain to items on the meeting agenda. And are, I guess, I mean, just to make that sentence say that it doesn't have to be items that are on the agenda for people to ask questions.
For clarity, Counselor Kind wishes the H I to speak to any question can be posed to council. And it does not have to be on specific to the agenda.
And your worship, it does say that they're directed to the chair. That all questions must be directed to the chair.
Which it should be.
Yeah.
So for clarity, again, just looking to remove items on the agenda. With that, comments, questions? Council member have any thoughts on that motion? Counselor Bold.
I just want to say that I support Counselor Kind.
Mayor Young?
Yeah, I'll be in support of that as well. I think sometimes if we've seen this before, especially in our question period, it sometimes tends to be some of our older residents that maybe haven't had access to the agenda. They're not going to know what's on the agenda, but they have a question. So I'm supportive in that. I think we've been very open. Our residents tend to be okay with if we don't have the answer, that we'll get them the answer. So I I'm in favor of that change.
Thank you. Counselor Bernice?
Thank you. I wrestle with that a little bit. I think the reasoning behind it was timing and keeping a tighter agenda and our agendas just due to our meetings tend to go on and on and on. I have no issue with. I would like to give residents every opportunity to ask a question, but I don't know if that's the right venue. Could anyone speak to, maybe we need comms here, perhaps Bernie? The other ways that people could ask questions that are not related to the topic.
Ms. Morton?
Well, thank you. You recall that we sort of expanded the public's opportunity to engage with council by adding some significant sections within your committee of the whole and restructuring the committee of the whole. We also have email opportunities, exchanges via Facebook. We have the mayor, his open door policy, although we're in COVID right now, but he's still taking. So I know that just from the day when I arrived in August 2018 to now, there's been significant increases in the public's ability to communicate, engage, have access to council, ask questions. So you know, I'm a little bit of a purist that the council meetings are about procedure, they're about protocols, they're about Robert's rules of order, which is separate and apart from all that other type of engagement that we're that we're often doing. But I think I had indicated just part of the rationale about having questions during this formal council meeting section, and that's in a council meeting, to have those questions pertaining to the agenda, simply because I myself and staff feel often unprepared when there's a general question coming from the member of public who have taken time and energy to come down and visit council. And they ask the question and they are presumably expecting an answer. And often we're not in a position to provide those answers because we haven't done the research or so there's many ways. But you know, this is not a hill to die on. This is council's procedure bylaw and you have to feel 100% comfortable with it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I have Counselor Ryan, Counselor Bold, Counselor Kind.
Through worship to the C A O and rest of council, yeah, I kind of struggle with this one as well. I mean, I see both sides of it. But I think ultimately, the end of the day, I'll, you know, I will support the changes being proposed by Counselor Kind for the reasons being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bold?
I just would like to say that I understand Bernie, Bernie, I I understand that you may not be in a position to answer the question that may be presented. But I think denying the question is detrimental. And I believe that also moving the questions for more of a committee of the whole, for maybe more debate is is the public is not going to be aware that they should be bringing their questions to a committee of the whole. They they think the council meetings are the place to bring their questions when they have concerns. And I think if they're bringing questions to council, then then they're definitely a concern to that particular person. And anyways, that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And Counselor Kind?
Thanks, your worship, through you and to the C A O and all of council. Just, just to be clear, in this same section, H, it addresses the time factor cap. He sort of addresses the five-minute limit, which is within his worship's or general consent of council to lengthen. And it also addresses Bernie's concern because it it states that, you know, administration may respond at that time, or they can provide a response at a later date. So I think it sort of covers everything. But I I just think, you know, it sounds like it's important to all of us that most people don't know how everything works. I certainly never did when I was just a resident, not on council. And if they show up, I just, I think we would all just like them to be able to ask their question. Whether we can provide an answer, that's that's irrelevant. If they have to wait, they have to wait.
Thank you. Counselor Folks? Any comments?
The only comment I'll make is is that, yes, committee of the whole not committee of the whole, but public hearing meetings, yes, you need to stick to the topic. But with the meeting agenda, which this one is that we're talking about right now, it doesn't say anything about public hearing. Public hearing in it. It just basically says agenda. Council agenda, meeting agenda. And so I guess my thought is we need to be, we said we want to be transparent. And by being transparent, we must be available to let them ask questions. And if we are in tune with our operation, we can give an answer or we can give them, we will get you an answer. And I think that's the best way to handle it.
Thank you. And Counselor Bold?
Sorry, I didn't mean to have my hand up again.
With that, Counselor Kind, you made the motion. You have the close. Any further comments?
No, your worship.
Thank you. So with that, we have a motion to strike items on the meeting agenda. Will that work?
If I could, your worship?
Sure.
That sentence will now read, questions must be directed to the chair.
Which is current practice.
Yes, that's correct.
So during this section, any member of the public may come forward and ask a question of council. Questions must be directed to the chair. Clear for everybody? Any clarification required? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, let's carry. Any further comments or questions? We have first reading with one amendment. Any further comments? Any further comments or questions? Seeing none then? So that's the only modification to the bylaw and first reading. With that, I'll call for the vote on first reading as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you. Okay, we can go back to time for. Now move to second reading. And who's the council? I'll look for a motion to put second reading. Counselor Ryan?
Let's move that council gives second reading of bylaw thirteen twenty.
Just for clarification, we don't have to say is amended. It's now, okay, thank you. So Counselor Ryan has put second reading of the bylaw on the table. Further comments, questions? Seeing. For clarity, Counselor Bernice, are you looking for an inter question? No? Okay. So with that, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Carried, thank you. With that, we can move to, for permission. Counselor Bold?
No, my hat wasn't up, sorry.
Are you hearing the sound good enough, Counselor Bold?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So permission for third. Counselor Bernice?
I move that council give permission for third reading of bylaw zero one three dash two zero.
With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? That's not unanimous, so we will stop there. Thank you. Okay, thank you, council. That now moves us to. L correspondence and information, I'm seeing none. Move to M, notice of motion. Does any member of council have a notice of motion? Seeing none, thank you. That allows us to move to N, which is the in camera portion. Counsel, we do have six in today. One, intergovernmental relations discussion under section twenty-one regarding municipal referral. Three, advice from officials discussion under section twenty-four regarding the C R C A and business continuity and update from the DEM. And, and economic interest and legal discussion under section twenty-five and twenty-seven regarding recreation. And a business interest item under sixteen, sale of city hall. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to move in camera.
All right, Your Worship?
Yes.
I make the motion that we move in camera at this time.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. With that, we'll give administration a few minutes to shut down the live stream, live streaming. Romney's on it, says live stream is up and running. And to conclude today's council meeting, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Bold?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? That's carried. Good work, King.
Bernie, your.